I'm going to call the first public hearing to order. It's public hearing number one, Maine Public Employees Retirement Plan Update Referendum Vote, March 5th, 2024, the Oxford Town Office, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The reason for that, it's required, we're required to have a public meeting for us to change the retirement plan through Maine State Retirement, and this is what put the new future fire chief and potentially any other future full-time firefighters or EMTs in a public service, public safety retirement plan. Any comments from the public? Lois?
That last statement you made, is that true that it is for everybody in the service, not just the chief?
So this, this should qualify any full-time employees in public safety, much like the police department is now.
Right.
So we currently only have one full-time employee in the fire department, and currently we don't have any because we don't have a fire chief. But we don't, that's the only full-time position we have in the fire department.
So what, the forty hours or fifty-three hours, that doesn't make them full-time?
They're generally per diem employees, they, they work forty hours one week or fifty hours one week, and then they work twenty hours another. They're not designated as full-time employees.
Okay, but I, I, does this put it any closer to us having a designated full-time employee?
That would be something that would have to come to the, to the town meeting on a, on a ballot.
On the ballot.
On the ballot board of the town meeting.
So the answer is no, right?
I only were part of the question, but are you asking, are we moving towards having full-time fire EMS employees at the department?
On the retirement program.
For the retire, so this, what this will offer is it will, and if this was already said, I apologize, what this will offer is so that full-time fire EMS employees would be eligible with this. Currently, the only full-time position there is the fire chief, fire EMS chief. If in the future, say five years from now, ten years from now, is decided to bring on full-time employees, then they would then be eligible. The reason it was drafted the way that it is is so that we wouldn't have to go back to town meeting and ask again if that were to happen, you know, thinking that someday we probably will have full-time, someday.
I think we should now.
But, so.
Well, it's the original, originally when they did this, they did it for the police department, but the wording was left out that, you know, for the thing, that's, that's really all it is. We get it so that it could be, should we have full-time employees there, they would be covered under the same plan that the police department is now? We don't argue that.
Any other public comments? Any other comments from the board? Close public hearing number one. Public hearing... Number two, marijuana facility licensing renewal application for Lance Person doing business as Bog Brook Botanicals. Any comments from the public? Any comments, questions from the board? Close that public hearing. Public hearing number three, marijuana facility licensing application renewal for Renewal Gardens LLC. Comments from the public? Comments from the board? Close that public hearing. Public hearing number four, marijuana facility licensing application renewal for Thompson Lake Caregiving doing business as TLC The Hideaway. Comments from the public? Comments from the board? Close the public hearing. Call the selectmen's meeting to order, please, Thomas and Mike Swu.
I'd like to thank you.
...... of the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That always sounds much better when you have a room. Nope, we're going to go right into the selectman presentation. We're going to present the Boston King to John Crumpton, who is here with us tonight. John, you can sit right there for now, or you can stand and come up if you'd like. I've got a little thing I'm going to read, so everybody can hear and learn a little bit about you if they don't already know it.
It might as well get full of money worth.
And I'm going to just stand after the side. Somebody take him with you.
You're going to have to sit.
I'm going to have you sit.
He's already reaching for it.
Well, I thought you were handing it, you waving your hand around.
I gotta, gotta read about you first. Town of Oxford's oldest resident, 2024, John, is it Reeves?
Reeves.
Reeves Crumpton, Jr., was born on October 14th, 1924, in the small town of Craig Springs, which is now Sturgis, Mississippi.
It's not a town, it's a community.
I'm going to take your word for it. He's the son of John Reeves and Jenny Leela Hannah Crumpton. John explained Craig Springs was such a small community that there were no more than a half dozen houses, a school, a Lutheran church, and a cemetery on their crossroads. John is known for his good humor, remarkable memory, and dedication to his family and the residents of Oxford. He has lived in Oxford for forty years. John was a very dedicated and proud member of the Oxford Congregational Church, where he served as a trustee and as the church moderator. His service to God and his ser, and his church is most important to him, and he attends faithfully every Sunday. John is an active member of the Oxford Historical Society, the Anderson Staples Legion Post, and the Twin Town Nature Club. John served in the military from age eighteen to age fifty-one, enlisted in the United States Navy in nineteen forty-two, and retired in nineteen seventy-five as captain and commanding officer of the USS Dale. During his thirty-three years in the military, he was recognized for the following awards: Allegion of Merit, Navy and Marine Corps Medal, Joint Services Commendation, Navy Commendation Navy Commendation with Combat V, Gold Star, Korean Service Medal, and the Armed Forces Expeditionary Medal, Vietnam. On October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, John will turn one hundred years old, making him Oxford Maine's oldest resident. I think he already is the oldest resident, but it's an honor to dedicate this very deserving award of the Boston King to John Crumpton, Jr.
Wow. I think it's there. Wow.
What's going on the town page too, John?
I want to show you a picture.
Awesome. Thank you. It would be nice if you could, could we all get y'all?
Thanks. Thank you.
Yes, sir. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
I've known the gentleman for a while.
Oh, excuse me. Hi, how are you? Thank you.
All right, we'll do it this way, huh, Sam?
People's coming, I'm sure they can see it.
There you go. Okay, I think I got it. He'll take it home with him.
Thank you, sir.
We'll make sure he, someone carries it out for him. There you go, sir. You got that?
Yes, sir.
My, my, real quick, I saw John at a Maine Mariners playoff hockey game last winter at ninety-eight years old, about ninety-nine, yeah, and he seemed to go up and down the stairs quicker than most people, myself included.
I have ordered tickets for next season, too. I'm glad to know it.
And anytime you want, he'll take you out on a sailboat.
May I say something?
Absolutely sure.
When I came to Oxford in nineteen seventy-five, we bought that house in Allen Hill Road in April, we moved in in October, and two weeks later, I came down to the town office and said that I want to register the vote. And the clerk seemed a little surprised, but she said, what's your name? And I said my name, and there was a guy sitting in the back of the room pushing papers around, and he hopped up and he said, I've been waiting for you. And they put me on the planning board. I said, I don't know anything about the planning board, or even the town government in Maine. And that's the way we left it. But in a couple of weeks, I had an appointment to go to that little school down to Central Maine College there in Alvin, and I, they sent the rest of the planning board to keep me company and keep me straight. And I was eleven and a half years on the planning board. Then they asked me if I would help with the comprehensive plan. The town didn't have one that the state liked, so we, I told them no. But they asked me a second time later on, and I said, yes, I would, but not while I was on the planning board, so I, I, I dropped off the planning board, and I worked on the comprehensive plan, and we got that, waited for the voters, and they accepted it, and the selectmen then asked me if I would work on the zoning ordinance. And I think we were the first town in Maine to have, well, in our area anyway, to have a zoning ordinance. And I want you all to be careful, don't tell them too much. Oh, I don't need this here, have they? You put this on display now.
Yeah, I am.
Alice, I think Alice Tiner, she used to go to Arizona, and she kept this thing under her bed, making sure it was all right.
I wonder if I could just get a picture of you in the chair out there, sitting in the chair, and then we can pass it on. And, yeah, did you, I was going to ask. I'm taking it on. I know where you live.
I think Alice worried about it, and when she came back, she gave it to the town. And you've been running it back and forth since then. Thank you very much.
Thank you for doing this with John. Thank you.
I'm overwhelmed.
I was going to say, I think it was on all those committees, but.
Thank you.
Well, there's Ed. Pretty good, how you doing? Nice to see you.
There isn't any hope at all.
Hey, you behave yourself.
And number two, action, or number three, action on the minute.
They actually leave?
Second.
Move the second, discussion. All in favor? Vote. Adjustments to the agenda?
The only thing that was changed is that warrant number seventy-one was added, but that's reflected on there.
It's not blue either. Both being colored.
Public comments. Please state your name and the town you are from, if you have any comments. Lois Spiker.
Well, I'd just like to say that I didn't know that was a public hea, I mean, a hearing they were having, or I would have come to it, but I, I really want you all to know that anybody I've talked to is in support of having that assisted living, and I don't think that's what they call it, but that's what it is, where the middle is.
Turn on the appeals board meeting, that was just.
It was here, yeah, but I, I missed that one. It's, I can't begin to tell you how many people would really like to stay in this area in, in the camp, because there just isn't a place to go when they get to that age, including myself. You either go to Portland, or you go to Thane, or somewhere out in the woods. So I just wanted that stated, and I think that was it for today. Well, I, I said what I, about the, uh, what, the, yeah, what was it? Retirement plan. I think all our employees should be part of that plan. It's one of the few things that you do get for doing the work they do.
Did she say there was an appeals board meeting tonight on that?
Earlier today.
Earlier. Did they make a decision on that? I have not heard. What, I have not heard?
Yes, they did. Let me read the, the code enforcement advised me, this is moments before I walked in, variance was approved.
Yes, variance was approved.
So that means the density requirements, they got their variance, so they can have more density, and they can have the seventy-five units.
Any other public comment? Business item, six point one, review approved marijuana facility licensing application rule for Lance Person doing business as Bog Brook Botanicals. It's on this report. We have any issues? None. Scott in motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor? Vote. Six point two, review approved marijuana facility licensing application renewal for Renewal Gardens LLC. Motion?
No, we do, right? Negative.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Vote. Six point three, review and approve marijuana facility licensing application rule for Thompson Lake Caregiving doing business as TLC The Hideaway. Motion?
Second.
Second. Sharon Jackson, the discussion? All in favor? Vote. Six point four, solid waste ordinance discussion.
You back there, Ed?
Yeah.
So Ed, Ed approached me the other day to talk about solid waste ordinance, and so specifically, what he wanted to talk about is the ordinance, as we all remember, prohibits, you know, picking or allowing residents to take items from the transfer station once they've come in, as they're seen as town property. And then Ed was also hoping to have another discussion about the clear plastic bags.
Yes. As you all know, everybody keeps bringing in all these items that people would love to have, but we throw them in the tractor bucket, and throw them away, and throw them in the hole, and they're gone. I'd like to hope you guys would think about maybe in the future, a swap shop type area where they can pick, and if it's there, two days after that, it's gone, you know? But all this stuff that's coming in, it's, it's getting thrown away, is foolish. And it's, it's going to save you guys money because it ain't going to happen. Somebody wants it, and it's nothing that's valuable to us, but it's put in the trash and being thrown away. That's, that's the big thing on that one. But the, the other one was, the black, black bags to clear bags, it's not in our ordinance that they must be clear bags, it's in our, it's in our citizens' responsibility. The ordinance doesn't state that, but if we need to go back to clear bags only, just so that selectmen know, we're not going to rip them bags open, there's needles and all that stuff that are around there now, it's just foolish. And now they're coming out with these vape pens that got nicotine in them, now the DEP is telling us not to, not even to touch the bags. So all you can do is just discipline them, and say, you know, hey, you can't have, can't be done this way. Without saying, I'd like to be able to talk to the board maybe about selling garbage bags again, because everybody can't find clear bags. I mean, Walmart had a lawsuit just three months ago, because it said recyclable bags on it, they're not recyclable bags, it's recyclable products in the bag, and they had to pull all the, the bags out of the shop. I went and had a meeting with the, with the manager, and he says, you know, we're going through a lawsuit right now. So now they've got Hufian, a Heftian, but that's the only bag they've got, and if everybody starts grabbing, they're going to be gone. And I've got a deal where we can, where we can buy cases of bags, there'd be like twenty in a, a thing, and you can sell for five dollars, the town's going to make two dollars and fifty cents a thing, so that's an extra income for us. The other thing was, something else that I need to bring up was the broker that does all our recycling, he was, got Rupa's Beverage that needs a place to dump their cardboard, but it's all baled, and he just needs a place to store it for the truck to go out, because they don't have a loan dock, and he's offered to pay us ten dollars a bail for every bail they bring in. That's extra income, if we, if we see it's fit, that we can do it, and we got a big, big project coming up on the building for the wall, so any of that extra income would help. And just, I want to give you a little figures, so far for oversized bulky waste, we're taking in forty-three thousand three hundred seventy dollars since July. Recycling's been eleven thousand four hundred ninety-one sixty-five, and then we've done over six thousand dollars in just metal. So we're, we're looking at, you know, way over what we've done in the years past. That's all I got to say. I'd really like to talk about the, the bags if we could.
What do you want to talk about?
I'd like to be able to sell them, man. Yes, I'd like to be able to sell them. I'll buy ten cases at a time instead of a pallet, you know, then we can control them.
So my question is, um, do we have to buy from the transfer station, or can we buy our own?
No, you can buy your own, too. It's just, this is just, so if somebody comes in and says, I can't find them, hey, I offer them right here.
So I would say, put a plan together and bring it to the board. Exactly what your plan is, and how it would be presented, and on the items that you're talking about that come in, and not throwing everything away, I would say, put, put a plan together, bring that plan in so that we know exactly what you're proposing.
Okay, no, that's fine.
That would be my recommendation.
I agree with Sharon. I've had quite a few requests, people showed up, especially at my business complaining that they want to give, give this stuff away, but they can't because they could throw it in the hop.
Yep, that's what we was told, so that's what we've been doing.
We didn't bring it back, so I encourage, if we can do that, put a plan together so we can go back to that.
Yep, okay. That's all I got, thanks.
In reference to Mr. Knightley's, when it comes to the wall, he mentioned some other capital items, we're still waiting on finalizing the pricing for that.
He said, he said that he can't give a price, when I talked to him the other day, he don't give it, but we can put it out to bid and see what comes in.
Okay.
I mean, they set the plan and put it up to bid, and see what comes in, and then go open it up.
I'm fixing that back wall we looked at, that's slanted. And that was what the engineer had told you?
The engineer said he don't have to give a price, he's never run.
Okay.
But it's not going to be cheap, he said, so that's why he locked it, but we have got the plans, Adam, I think we just got.
Okay.
And they, they got just like twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to draw them up, but we do have plans, so.
Do we need to be approved by the state to do that?
It's just repair, it's not, it's not, no change.
Do we ever decide about the bathroom and all that?
Yeah, it's still up with these guys, I think.
Yeah, we, we just got all the pricing for that stuff, and so we're putting it in the capital plan that the board will be getting, but we were waiting on this last piece for the wall to do it all together, but you heard what Ed just said on that, so the board will be seeing about the bathroom and the sink and all that kind of stuff, so. Ed's actually put some pretty good work into that with coming up with water tanks versus bathroom versus well, I mean, he's put a lot of legwork into this, so I think it'll be informative.
So you'll have all those prices when we review the capital plan then, for all of those options?
I'd like to go put that out to bid, that wall, and just, we'll know what figures come in that, we'll be close.
I think that's a good idea. Then, then we at least know what it's going to cost for the budget.
I've been working on the bail a lot, too, second.
Yes, calling nine.
Motion second, Jackson to Jackson.
Jackson to Jackson.
Discussion, all in favor? Vote. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Solar farm moratorium discussion.
So this, sorry. So at the last meeting, the board had asked about a solar farm moratorium, so I did, I went ahead and I spoke to our assessing agent, I also reached out to the town attorney, because we, we've worked on these kind of things in the past before, so he was able to just send a draft moratorium ordinance, which is included in your package for you folks to look at. This obviously can go back in time and do anything to the ones that already existed, be grandfathered, if you will, but this would give the town, once it was passed at town meeting, a hundred and eighty days to develop a comprehensive ordinance on any one of them.
Let's be a good board. Yeah, motion, you go ahead with this one.
Second.
Motion second, and a discussion. All in favor?
Will that be for the June town meeting?
Six point six, review award town office conference room, RFP.
All right, so if the board remembers at the last meeting, I advised that we extended the, the bid, you know, the bid and due date for this, this room in here. So we only received one bid, a copy of that is in your packets, also a copy of the RFP itself is in there. The two options that we asked for, that we were a little unclear what we wanted to go with, was the flooring portion, whether we wanted to go with a commercial carpet versus a, like a vinyl type flooring, and a commercial grade one. Contractor gave us two prices, as we asked for, for commercial flooring would be seventy-nine thousand seven hundred to do this room. I should probably back up. That includes removing the center walls in here, removing this right here, adding a door to the back entrance, which would make it like a vestibule, so for airflow and stuff, and then adding a door over here, right at the lobby, so that when something was going on in here, it could be closed off from the rest, the rest of the, you know, lobby space and so forth, so.
Is that just taking out one wall, or both?
Both walls.
Okay.
And when we take out the walls, what we talked about as a money saver, is if you look in other parts of the building, the walls were cut so that there was still kind of a ridge there, almost like a fake beam, if you will, so you wouldn't interrupt the, the suspended ceilings, because it sounds like pretty big money if we get into the suspended ceiling, but could make it look decorative and make it look nice, but still just not interrupting the suspended ceilings. That would, so that's where we come to the seventy, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred for commercial flooring, the commercial carpeting is seventy-five thousand seven hundred, and he also brought up lighting, doing lighting throughout. Now, those two bids include all the wiring, but if we wanted to upgrade to all LED lighting at this end of the building, it would be seventy-one hundred dollars in addition. He, we talked about having a completion date, he could start the project on the sixth of March sixth, and then he's asking if he could have until April fifteenth, which he knows is a long period of time, but that would allow him to fit it in and get it done. So the other things that this includes is all the finish work, it also includes adjusting the HVAC to accommodate the appropriate, you know, wind changes and so forth.
So what you're saying, we could have town meeting.
If you think this space is big enough for that, we can ask those.
Would, now, what have we got for money to pay this, I mean, we, we have some still hidden there, right, correct, my error?
I wouldn't say it's hidden, but.
Well, no, I didn't mean it to.
In the, the town office account, we still have, we have ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars in that.
All right, because I make a motion, we get it done.
Save it.
Hard question.
Motion is second.
Why don't we just do it all?
Seventy-nine plus the seventy, so.
Might as well do the lighting, you're right here, get it done.
Thought you were talking in carpet or bare floor.
Bare floor.
Bare floor.
On flooring?
Yeah.
So the two things that came up about the flooring, one, commercial flooring, easier to keep, you know, clean and so forth, but then. But then the, the carpeting, it's a, it comes in squares and it's glued down. And he said that the bone, not the bonus, but the nice thing about the squares is that if there's a problem with that one piece, you can remove it and replace it. So it's kinda fifty-fifty on which would be better. He did think the carpeting might be less slippery. Um, that was another thing he brought up. But, um, I mean frankly, I'm pretty fifty-fifty. I think it'd be nice to be able to sweep the place out, that'd be nice as well.
Cleanings will have easier with the platform. So I'm saying that my motion would approve the, the, uh, commercial flooring and the LED light.
Any more discussion? Allos in favor? Vote.
So if I may, though, one, uh, one thing that brings up is it's budget season. Um, so doing this, if it starts on March sixth, I, you folks, okay if we do our budget meetings up at the fire station in that conference room? I checked with the fire, fire department, we're good to go there, so.
I think that would be fine, we've dealt with plenty of air room, we just came from there.
Yep.
All right, it's the best location.
Thank you.
And I'll meet the fire department. Department. Thank you for the walk through of the fire station. North Fire Station.
So as far as, um, tonight, we just, we pretty much, Sean pretty much covered most everything we're down there, so I'll keep it pretty brief. Uh, some of the things that were discussed that I think bear a little more discussion is it was talked about, they had third ambulance, uh, whether or not we looked to the future to keep that or not. Um, engine four, engine five. Uh, if you look at your capital plan here, we had allotted, we had allotted a hundred thousand dollars as a starting to save towards that next truck. I think we, I think, I think we mentioned it, you know, lease purchasing, I think, is another thing we need to probably talk about when we start replacing things. And also, um, frankly, we just need to decide how big of a fleet that we would need. I think that's the first thing we need to do, so. You also have, uh, your air bottles, which is every year. Those are on the capital plan. We've been doing five a year. And then turnout here is also on here, on the capital plan.
So my opinion on the capital plan. It just looks like a big jump if we're gonna put aside a hundred thousand dollars and a hundred thousand dollars and then jump to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. If there's a way to even that out a little bit, if possible, but it may not be possible, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think we can be creative. Um, that seven-hundred-and-fifty is allotted for the engine, the fire engine that's up here at, uh, at the north station. As that gets closer, I think we can be creative with maybe a refurbishment where we, uh, spruce up the motor, spruce up the pump, maybe a coat of paint, that kinda thing, and get some more life out of that truck. As I indicated to some of you that had stopped there, that, that truck is actually one of the best in the fleet, or is the best in the fleet, and it continues to run and be sort of the workforce. And the only reason that it's necessarily up here is because it's the only truck that will fit in there. However, that truck is, has been the least problematic with maintenance and such, so.
Questions for the board? None?
I just thanked Sean for the tour. I thought it was a good tour and I thought it was informative, so thank you.
Police Department Discussion.
So the police chief has something he would like to propose to the board.
So we, as you know, I have several grant writers within the department. We've been searching grants to help, to support our department and keep us moving forward. And we've, we've, we've talked and we've looked at a canine program for years. So we looked at this grant that they was offering and we, we, we reached out and they reached back to us with the initial response that they would award us for, for the program to get it started. It was twenty-seven thousand dollars. After we got this, we got a phone call from the grant people and said, "By the time, um, the dog was chosen, the dog is trained, the officer was trained with it and everything, the grant would even, even out to about fifty-one thousand dollars that they would give us, which would make it almost zero cost to the town, um, to go ahead and do that." The only thing that we see right now is a cruiser, but was, we're still looking at different options, um, for doing something like that. The casino also has, uh, they found out about, we was looking at different grants. And they've offered to do a fundraiser in the month of, month of March, uh, to support the program too.
What's the yearly cost there?
There, I'd have to actually sit down and figure it out once the training and everything was done. Um, because we've got, so, this, some of this will allow us three years for like food, vet visits, things like that. So I could actually sit down and break it down once it got into a normal yearly routine. I can get those figures for you.
Is this an additional officer?
It's not an additional officer, it's an adjustment to a position.
Meaning?
Meaning one of the officers that we would have would become the canine officer. So I would be creating a new position for this. They'd just be the handler for that dog.
And would that position change categorically wage?
Something we'd have to work out with the union. Yep.
Is there any, any talk, I'm assuming no talk with the union steward on this?
We haven't even gotten that far with this. This is in the initial stages.
So we would need to talk about CBA.
What do we, you know, in a situation where we naturally have a dog now, what, what do we do in that situation with somebody from the state?
We do have local dogs, but the last time we needed a dog, we had to get one from Anderson Skogin because Comney's wasn't available, Norway's wasn't available, and Paris's wasn't available. And the thing with the dog is if we have the dog for like article searches, people searches, we have the animal right there to do it. We don't have to wait the time, the time, the additional time. And also it helps us build trouble causes for a lot of our drug cases. And that way it's, it's, the dog would be ours so we don't have to give reports from other agencies to help us do that. We can all do it as one.
So is there a match or is this a hundred percent?
No, it's a hundred percent. There's no match.
So, anybody else? I, I, I like the idea, obviously, with grant. I think this is something we, we need to discuss with the union first, um, because if they're not gonna buy you, um, then we're not gonna waste the time and the money to, to do it. Second issue, as you said, county has a dog, Norway has a dog, Paris has a dog. You have different levels of training in dogs. Some of them are drug dogs, some are patrol dogs, um, whatever. They certainly would like to see some coordination. And again, coordinating with the other towns makes it a little tricky, so if you have three towns, Norway, Paris, and Oxford, and they all have a canine, you'd think we could coordinate, one of those dogs is working at any given moment during the day.
Wouldn't you?
Um, instead of having all three dogs working without, at night and none available during the day.
Right, that way there wouldn't be a dog for all three towns round the clock right now. Like I said, we've had to get a dog from Anderson Skogin the last time we needed because none was available.
So those would be mine.
Yep.
Issues with trying to do this.
Well, this looks like it's just at a public stage.
It is right now, yes.
Excuse me, the county's got one?
The county just got theirs. Well, they had one a few years ago, there was a problem. It went away because the handler went away. And then they just reinstated canine program last year. A lot of training involved, so are you gonna take an officer out of?
Fourteen weeks, which this grant would cover that.
So that would be for fourteen weeks, that would require another officer or officers to cover that shift.
Shifts, yep.
So would the board be interested, just so the chief and I have some direction, be interested if we approached the union and maybe had a preliminary discussion on what adjustments to the CBA would need, you know, the bargaining agreement would need to be made? And then maybe we can have an answer on continuing costs after the grant period is over? And, uh, kind of a, I don't wanna say life expectancy, but, you know, how long the dog would be viable and how much that might cost over the lifespan of that? So maybe by the time we come in for the police budget, would that be a good time to be ready for that conversation or?
I think so. I'd really like to, I would like to see here what the union.
Yep.
Would like. If, if they want an extraordinary payment, you know, I wanna make this much more than another officer. We certainly need to know that upfront. Those discussions can be had.
We're, on the bottom of the page, it says, "Please note the initial grant does not cover costs of any wages."
Yes, when they called us back, that is not the case.
Okay.
So I made a mark on that. Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. This, like I said, this, what I had sent was the initial response and then they called us and said, "Well, this is what we can do and this is what we're willing to do." And they equaled up to about fifteen thousand dollars that's available. That's, we don't have to match it all.
Is there a timeframe, chief, on whether they need to?
Um, yeah, right now, if, if we move forward with this, the dog and the officer wouldn't be going to training until next March. That's the next available training that they would have for us. I mean, we, we have time to study this and look at it and.
So you can hold here?
Yes.
So you don't need to bring it to budget?
Do they need an answer on the, I think.
That was my question.
These are on the grant.
The grant, people that are awarded the grant, do they need an answer?
They probably will at some point. I don't have a date on that right now, Scott, um, but I, I can, I will find more out.
Well, I, I guess, to me, if, if they need to know by end of June.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll find that out too, yeah.
How many are you reporting?
Uh, gift reminder, March fifth, elections here. Reminder to vote. Also reminder to, uh, vote on the main public employees' arrangements will change. And now a reminder that in March, the meetings will be held at the fire station in the conference room. The town's clerk, town clerk's office will be closed on March fifth for the election, meaning, so you'll be able to get in the building, but you won't be able to register your car that day. Election clerks, we still could use some Wendy's ads, if anybody's interested or you know somebody that's interested. And, uh, I've been meeting with the department heads, things are going well as far as budget's going. Everybody's been doing a really good job getting all the information together. I think you guys will be pleased when, uh, that's presented at the next meeting.
I'm gonna throw in selection items because it's not on here. We missed, we missed that one, the adjustments, but. Anything? Nothing, nothing, nothing?
So just a follow-up, you said what the appeals board, it was a variance?
Correct.
So that means they meant the hardship requirements.
Yep.
I find that hard to believe, just that they would need that.
What kind of hardship is it?
There's, there's four and they're, um, laws of the state. And it's, it's, uh, there's a manual that they write in and I do know what they are, I just can't think of.
Yeah, but I mean, what kind of hardship would they have?
Interesting to see the written decision.
Well, that's what I'd like to see, is what the hardship was that the appeals board stated that they had that they were able to get an appeal on.
You should have told us when you have it.
I will, yes.
You haven't had a, uh, information on the, the, uh, cleanup of the couch there that we condemned, can't get that.
King Street? The King Street one?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, no action has been, I mean, everything's been filed with the registry, our part's done. Now we're waiting for that ninety days, but nothing is.
No, I just didn't notice it come up or anything, correct?
Anything else? Sign warrants?
Do you have the signature?
Sign state, they have black. Does that make sense?
But somebody ran off and had blue one. I didn't bring it because you don't give anyone.
Well, you can, because you always have a blue one.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's in my other pocket.
I think it might be a rebel.
I think you borrow. I didn't consult with you, have one. Have a good evening. Here, we're gonna get a.
Things are floating around in the sky.
No, 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 what I, what do I want for a?
Thanks, guys.
You do.
We have a drone program.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna drive so fast.
Way back, we had all the scientists up. The community that helped veterans and so forth. Have we, have we done anything with that? Giving them a job.
Oh, you know, I wonder.
Well, I just wondered if we, we pass the road. I mean. The drones leave from there, they don't, nobody has to drive anywhere to do it. It's just not. You can't, but it could be all launched from there, because in the.
Well, the range is only so far.
Right, but I did that.
It depends on where, where the event happens.
Well, in our town, it's, we can cover it from a million.
We get closer to the event in the morning.
Well, I just thought if you do.
Yeah.
Yes.
The schoolhouse room, just as you turn on one-twenty-one. That's state property, right? Just women, uh, state limits.
Yeah, you gotta be. You could lose a big one.
One-twenty-one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Right there.
Oh, that's right, right on the, right on. It probably is.
Three hundred bucks for the training.
Would you like me to have Jim follow up and see?
No, just to follow up a minute, if you don't have. Okay. Email me and then I'll email you the, the translation.
I guess we did, I think, whatever.
Get one of your papers taken down right there?
Well, I can't until I get an email, then I send an email and then they send it back. You should get some connections. I have no connection.
That's what somebody was saying when they walked out of here earlier too, wasn't they?
What's up?
And you, you guys just sit next to each other.
I don't know if I can hear what was.
I'm just going with it.
You know.
Okay.
I don't tell anybody. Oh, I'm not going.
Draft a bill for the next one, so the flesh and get one-hundred percent reimbursement for the solar farm.
Yeah. I'm waiting for the main ribbon service to back me. I haven't. You're getting money from them yet?
Oh, honor and funding they owe us?
Yeah, and no. And why is it that, uh, I want to find out what it all has and why were we told about it when we okayed the solar farm approval?
Hey, I think they failed to mention that.
It's one of those things that you adjust when you're talking.
I know you're a model of it.
I think, yeah, I think you can separate it from this. This is that extra paycheck we had to cut because of the Arabs. This is that extra paycheck we had to cut because of the Arabs. Just shuffle and put them on there.
In a hurry, I've got to spring these. Well, we're getting a little bit of dusting tonight, aren't we? We're getting a little dusting tonight, aren't we?
Snow.
We dodged the other one, didn't we? You, you got one?
This is down New York and Massa, right?
Yeah, in Rhode Island, I was there this last weekend. And they kept... Beach area, I think it was about a foot. It's a good place for them.
Can I ask a question? I was just looking at the expense summaries. Police, if they ticked it up, that there's a lot of negative balances in a lot of these accounts.
In the police funds?
The police, there is. Public safety building.
Yep, we've been running into, we had a lot of repairs and stuff with the public safety building, which is obviously cost...
Quite a deal with the recreation department, too. I only know because those got brought to my attention where I am. I think of that, what, here? Transfer station has some. There's some big ones, actually. Sewer department.
We've been having to make some adjustments to where some of these things are posted. But also, you will notice that bottom line on these individual budget, we're in a good place on the bottom line with these budgets.
Well, if I look at the transfer, no, transfer, this is the sewer department. There's eleven thousand dollars left. And we've got five months left. Four months. Wow.
So, for sewer, we've got sixty, we're at sixty-three percent toll.
Just thought it down. Thank you.
Make a motion, resign. Sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one.
Motion is second, I have a discussion. All those in favor? Vote. I can motion, session to discuss economic development matter pursuant to MRSA title one, chapter thirteen, section four oh five, sixty. Motion is second. All those in favor? Vote.